It is six o'clock, hour of holiday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Andrew Davis from the Fellowship Baptist Church providing invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Well, let's pray. Gracious Father, we are grateful to come together tonight to have this opportunity. I'm reminded just recently of many places in this world, they can't do what we're doing. And Lord, may we never lose our gratitude for this freedom. Father, may we also live up to this freedom. May we live up to the responsibility that you've given us as citizens. Lord, in this season, Lord, may we be especially grateful for how you've blessed us. Lord, you've given us these leaders, and I pray that you'd give them uncommon wisdom and prudence, that they might govern in a way that most pleases you and most benefits us. Father, I pray that you would guide us and direct us tonight. And Lord, we're, we'd be remiss if we didn't remember that you're sovereign, that we all serve at your pleasure. So, Lord, where we don't let you rule, I pray you'd overrule, that you would guide us where we don't have the good sense to go. So bless this occasion tonight, may it be done decently in an order and in a way that most pleases you. Thank you for this nation, thank you for our Commonwealth, thank you for this county that we love so much, help us to do right by all of them tonight. Amen. All these things, we lift up the lovely Lord Jesus Christ, for it's in his name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible]
Before we move on with the agenda, I want to welcome newly-elected town of Withfield Councilwoman Candace Johnson to join us. Do you want to say a few words? Feel free.
Hello, everybody. I appreciate everybody's support and encouragement. I've truly been blessed to have wonderful colleagues and friends in the town and in the county, Withfield and With County. So, I'm excited and I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make Withfield and With County a better place. So, y'all do a great job, and I'm ready to get on board and continue on, on the journey to making things great. But thank each and every one of you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, move into Citizens Time, first person we have signed up to speak is Mr. Jerry Blevins.
My domestic tourism report for this reporting period is worse than the one I gave it to the Lysus County Board of Supervisors meeting. On the morning of November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, I found a circuit breaker tripped that should not have been tripped. November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a shot was fired at six thirteen a.m., and two LED light bulbs were taken out for no reason. Light bulbs have been taken out before without a good reason, such as age or usage. November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, circuit breaker went out and could not be reset for several minutes. Also, my Suzuki car battery was messed with, but stained, no damage. On November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, my smartphone was messed with and setting was changed without an input from me. I went to use my copy machine and set the copy counter to one copy, but the counter quickly changed to thirty-three copies. At this point, I got my smartphone, intended to take a picture of the copy counter, but the copy count quickly returned to one. This is evidence, because it shows just how well the Secret Service has me under video surveillance. President Joe Biden was right when he stated that our cyber capability is significant. In my last two speeches to the With County Board of Supervisors, I talked about the huge increase in our personal property taxes, specifically about the different amounts given to counties and state of Virginia. I contacted Attorney Jed Arlen-Marin, who is Jeff Campbell's legislative assistant, and to date, he has not contacted me concerning the issue. Doing some independent research on my own, I scoured down the two thousands, our legislators noticed that a number of vehicles in Virginia was growing, and they could not sustain the car tax relief as it was currently in place. But to do away with the car tax relief would have been political suicide. So they voted to freeze the amount that all counties would receive at the two thousand four amount. No Virginia county can receive more than they received in two thousand and four. District local commission of revenue had to work within its financial guidelines. First, they counted eligible vehicles valued at a thousand dollars or less and removed that amount from the car tax relief received. Next, they counted eligible vehicles weighing less than ten thousand one pounds and valued less than two thousand dollars and come up with that total value for the county. The Department of Motor Vehicles provides the county with the vehicle type and number of vehicles. The commission of revenue then values the vehicles using whatever source they normally used to obtain a total valuation for the county. The total valuation is then divided by the number of vehicles. The number is then used in conjunction with the remaining car tax refunds to establish what percentage the county will allow each eligible taxpayer to receive. One of your supervisors here was inquiring as to why I'm here every week stating stuff and never asking, you know, what I want. I realize that these acts, or cyber acts, they're not something that can be done locally, because the technology is too advanced, it would have to be done on a federal level. And you're not involved in that, I understand that. But some of these problems that relate to that, the county is connected to. I'll try to make that more specific at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Next person we have signed up is Ms. Meyer, Ms. Meyer?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I did some driving around on Sunday, and I was concerned about the Gleaves Road from Cedar Spring, not from Cedar, from C.C. Camp Road. I pulled in, and you pull in several car lengths, and then there's a sign that says it's not a through road. To back out, the side of the road there is full of huge pines, and it's on a curve. So it's very, very hazardous to back out onto C.C. Camp Road. Okay? We need the sign there closer to C.C. Camp Road, so, or, yeah, excuse me, Cripple Creek Road, so people will not pull down there at all. Then I went around to Tank Road, because I go to Ravens Cliff a lot. Well, Tank Road is actually a one-car road. God forbid a vehicle get on that road, or two rigs or something, there is no place to get off, there is no place to turn around, you're basically stuck. So we need signs on the north side and the south side of Tank Road saying, "One-lane road only," so people will know that perhaps they shouldn't go there. Then at the other end of Gleaves, where it connects to Mule Hell Road, there is no sign saying that it's not a through road anymore. We need something there, too, before people get up in there and find out that they can't turn around either. And perhaps we should have a sign at Ravens Cliff saying, "U-turn available here." So if somebody did go up that road, they could at least go in there and turn around and get back out. So we've got some issues with that, with signage, and for safety-wise and convenience, it would be great if we could get some of that taken care of. Okay? So that's one thing. Last week, went to a listening session that was put on by the Farm Bureau for strengthening Virginia's animal lab, the four of them that are in the state. Well, there's also, they did a study, and it looks like somebody might have a brainstorm of having a hub in Virginia, instead of four diagnostic clinics, only having one. And that would put a great, great strain on all livestock, veterinarians, anybody that had need of a diagnostic lab to be, have to travel someplace. It wouldn't be safe for our citizens, and it's certainly not safe for our animals. So I'm asking you, as a board, for the sake of With County, to write a letter to Joe Guthrie, who is the Commissioner of Ag, and tell him we support keeping our lab here in Withfield. There were over a hundred and fifty people at this meeting the other, last week, and everybody was in favor of keeping our laboratory, our state lab, here in Virginia. So, if you could get on that as quickly as possible. The last thing, here's a, some paperwork about our electric grid that you should look at and tell our expressionists we're putting up older fiber optics. If we don't have electric, the fiber optics, that's not going to matter. So that Americans should be horrified with really taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. That's all we have signed up for Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. Mr. Barrett, have you had any follow-up to the DOD about, I know we talked about the signage?
The, I think I shared the latest email with you all the other day that has come from the state, and I'll work on getting that also out on our, our social media. They have indicated they are still looking at repair options, but limited on repair options, and they are looking at the, trying to speed up the design process for trying to build a bridge next to it, but there are right-of-way issues they'd have to obtain there. So, we'll look to putting that information out on the social media as well, and then I'll follow back up with Mr. Fowler on the signage concerns again, to make certain that they are addressing those.
And oddly enough, the state lab conversation, was that a month, two months ago when you met with Mr. Guthrie, when I asked you about?
Yeah, it's been several months that I met, since I met with him, and he indicated that they're doing studies and looking at things. I have not seen any, received any more information of any follow-up or actions or recommendations from them since that time, but he did indicate they are looking at, at study. I received some similar, similar situations, people contacting, worried about the local lab.
I have the paperwork from the, the, if you'd like to copy it, it's pretty much there.
Will you just reach out to him and see?
Yeah, I'll get it.
What's changed, and let us know.
Mr. Barrett, going back to the bridge, when we met with Beatle a couple Thursdays back, we talked about the signage with them at that time.
Yeah.
And so, to Ms. Meyer's point, we may want to follow back up, make sure we get the right signage there.
Yeah, that's, I thought it'd been taken care of and addressed, based on what they presented to us and talked about it then. I don't, I don't know about the, the Cripple Creek end, but I do know, I'm pretty sure the Gleaves Road, or the Mule Hell end, does have a sign, but it's like she says, you don't see it until after you get on the road, because I came back that way the other day and completely forgot about it, so I turned up in there and I was like, well, I guess I'll just go on. But, yeah, the, the signs need to be before you even turn on the road.
All right, moving on to our payment of invoices, we have amended appropriation, memos.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I realize you all usually don't have these, this part in your agenda, but time is of the essence for the Commonwealth attorney to use his money as he wants to for, his request is attached, and would request you all amend and appropriate a thousand dollars to the twenty-two oh one four six one two seven zero Commonwealth attorney forfeit asset expenditures. And that is a new code that we've set up, and that should help. His office, I discussed it with the sheriff as well, that we can look at using that code in their office, and we can charge all expenses to that code directly, and it would make the reporting and tracking of those items easier for them to do. So, request here to amend and appropriate the thousand dollars.
All right, entertain a motion to amend and appropriate the thousand dollars as requested by the Commonwealth attorney.
Same way.
Have a motion by Mr. Perry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni, is there any questions or discussion?
Is there some reason that we control this? And they don't have a check in time, the money just doesn't go into their checking accounts, so they don't have to go off through all those?
They, it is set in an individual fund that the treasurer keeps separate in the process, but it has to go through, you are the only ones that can authorize expenditures of warrants out of it. So that's why it has to run through you all. Setting up this code will allow it to be easier, because now one of the problems is they might provide it for postal services, or they might provide it for things like that. This way, in the future, we can put all those expenses under this one code, their, their clerk can pull out those expenses off of that code to fill out the annual report to go in.
Well, to Mr. Chris Horni, why are we even involved in this? And every time it comes up, I wonder, you know, DCJS or DOJ, depending on whether it's state or federal asset forfeiture, they have, they all this account.
Yep.
They have to get their approval. So why do we even, I mean, I'm all about checks and balances, but this is like check, check, balance. I mean, and I've checked with other counties, and they just create separate checking accounts, because, I mean, and I don't mean to put you right on the spot, but if I asked for a show of hands up here, who knows what's allowed, who's asset forfeiture money allowed to be spent on odds large, we're probably on, you want to handle it. So I would just say, get this off our plate, we have no business.
I will follow up again. My understanding is even the localities that have it under a separate checking account, it still takes board action. They just keep track of it under a separate checking account, but it is taking board action to issue those grants. I will follow up with our auditors again, to make certain that it's okay.
Well, and, and that's another question. That's another question, why are, why are our auditors, why are we paying our auditors to even look at that, when the state and the federal government has their own auditors and all this?
And, and the report that we fill out, our, we have to sign off on those ourselves. So, our finance director has to sign off on them, and I have to sign off on them as well. So while it's, it's, it's not, it's their money used for these asset forfeiture, it still has to run through the county process, and I will confirm that. If there's any way we can get out of doing it at all, we would be glad to do so. But that's, that's the reason why.
I guess the thing that, you know, we're asking for a thousand dollars here, or they're asking for a thousand dollars, I don't know what it's for, I don't know whether they can get it, they're buying what they're supposed to buy, so if I vote to approve it, and then they bought something that's illegal for them to buy, it come, it come back on me, right?
Well, his, his request here indicates that he wants a thousand dollars to give to the With County Sheriff's Office for the Shop with the Cop program. I have contacted DCJS, and this is a permissible use of these funds. So that is coming from Mr. Jones.
All right. Does anybody else have any more discussion? All right, here now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
All right.
I'll abstain.
Uh-huh. All right.
So approved. And Mr. Barrett, if you would just follow, like I said, every time it comes up, I just question why?
You mentioned it before, and that's why I, I talked with our staff and I talked with our auditors about tracking the expenditures, and that is why we're trying to set up this individual code, because it was difficult before, trying to break out what vehicle he might have bought as a vehicle expense versus what vehicle may have been a forfeit asset or expense or things like that. So this code number, and then we can budget every year, Mr. Jones can go ahead and request that he thinks he's going to spend five thousand dollars off of it, he won't have to come back to you all's amendment and appropriation, he just sends in a purchase order that says he's spending it, it's ill. If we can get out of doing all of that, that's it, but just put it in an individual account that is easier to track and easier, easier to budget.
Well, for us to vote on it, you're going to have to call every time and figure out whether it's authorized, because we vote on it. But I mean, the last thing I want to do is get jammed up or something, but if they shun the box, this is it.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, they get approval, approved either DOJ or DCJS before they even vote.
Typically, it's the, the things they ask, they've, they've either gotten approval or they know it's in the regulations, what they can use it for.
All right, moving on to the payment of invoices, each board member receives the invoices in their board package, make it work, so we pay the bills.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Smith, is there any invoice, any board member wants to pull out and handle or discuss? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Perry.
Uh, uh.
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 All right, so approved. Next item on the agenda is our, the minutes of our previous meetings from November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, entertain a motion to approve the amendments.
Same way.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Perry, is there any corrections to the minutes that's presented? Hearing none, auditors have favored signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Moving on to old business, we have the Mac Meadows Collection System Project.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have Zach Wright from Thrasher Engineering here with us. We, we had the bid tabulation results on the last meeting, and have a copy of it in there. The, I requested not taking action, Mr. Chris wanted to work with Thrasher and the engineering firm to look at some value engineering to lower our cost and our overage. Zach, if you want to go over some of the overages that you've changed here, and then I will explain where we are on our out-of-pocket expenses.
Yeah, I think, as I'm, I'm looking through this, I think there's a couple things that, that we missed when we were, we were putting this together this afternoon, and I'll, I'll mention those as well. We did, we did look at, at some cost savings over the original bid. There were some, some different framing covers, some changes to some anchor bolts, some, and just some various, various things that were, that were easy to do and, and knock, knock the price down a little bit. We also looked at, at, instead of, instead of, the, the county thinks that Dawn and Stephen think that they can do some of the work at the lift stations, the lift station rehab work cheaper than, than the bids came in, so we worked with the contractor to do those things, which is basically the rehab work to the, to the lift stations, they're going to do that. The scrubbers and some of the other, other work that needs to be done at the lift station, the county thinks that they can do it cheaper. So we, we, up until about two o'clock today, we've been working with the, the contractor to get those numbers down into a good, a good place for you all, cost-effective wise. In your, what you have in front of you is, basically shows the construction items, but it, it does not show, our fees were not added to, to that, that sheet, and that, that's something that needs to go on there.
I've got that to go over with.
Yeah, okay, okay, so that's in there, and, but, but I think, other than that, I think, I think what's, what you've got in front of you, let me. So the original, what, what, what the board approved and what we applied for alone with DEQ was originally one point two oh nine million. The change is basically, when we go through everything, there's eighty-nine thousand dollars in the new project that DEQ is, is not eligible for DEQ funds.
Those are items that we need to get done. We knew they were not eligible for DEQ funding, but we need that work done, so we included them within the bid while they're doing work, so we knew that was a part of it.
And then the, the grand total additional fees that, that are DEQ-eligible overruns is about eighty-one thousand dollars. So that's a, so you've got nine hundred and six thousand dollars, that is forgivable loan, basically a grant toward the project. DEQ will, will, everything that's eligible will give you a zero percent interest loan on the rest, which originally was three hundred and two thousand dollars, and is now three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, which is the second to last line there. And then eighty, eighty-nine thousand one twenty-sixty, which will be out-of-pocket, that's not eligible for, for DEQ.
The recommendation before you is, is, is basically, we, as he talked about, we will, we will go back to DEQ and ask for the additional money on the zero percent money to go from the three hundred to two thousand to the three hundred and eighty-three thousand, we'll, we'll, but the action needs you all to take tonight is to go ahead and award this bid to Main Street Builders, which has just recently done a project course and is in the process of doing a project course, in the amount of one million one hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-three cents, and that's the value engineer's cost of that.
Is that the, is that the mail-in letter we have?
That's, no, that's, that's the amount on the bottom of the spreadsheet, right here that's handed out, that's got the value engineer's.
The, what, million one seventy-four?
The.
On the spreadsheet, at the very bottom of the page, you've got the, the original bid total cost of one million four hundred fifteen thousand, and you've got the valued engineering cost of one million one seventy-four four sixty-four seventy-three, a cost savings of two hundred and forty-one thousand plus from the original bid. And this is all for the Mac Meadows sanitary sewer, this is manhole repairs, pump repairs, those things to limit the infiltration.
All right, entertain a motion to award the bid to Main Street Builders in the amount of one million one hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-three Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith, is there any questions or discussions? Mr. Barrett, what's likely good that we can get for zero percent of the additional money added to that zero percent?
Very good from our conversations with DEQ on that.
Is that because of the infiltration problem?
Yeah, I mean, they, they know, there's, there's a couple things going on. Number one, they, they know what this problem is taking care of. Number two, they understand all these projects have had some bid overruns in the current bidding environment, and, and I don't remember which source of their funding is for this, but they've got the money to butt towards it. They won't give us any more else in, in grants, but they will give us more in the, in the loans.
But something to, something to remember, too, they, originally, the grant was fifty percent of the project, several months ago, they increased that to seventy-five percent of the project, so you're still ahead in the total scheme of things from where you were originally.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? All right, here now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Perry.
Uh, uh.
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 All right, so approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Sorry, sorry, it's a little convoluted, we were, we were still figuring it out, just a couple hours ago.
Anything else under old business, Mr. Barrett?
I do not have anything else, sir.
All right, move on to report, we have the treasurer's report, Ms. Lynn.
Good evening. Good evening. Two of you are awake.
Thanksgiving evening.
I was going to say, already in that slumber mode from eating too much turkey, just thinking about it. Okay, I think, were financials distributed to the board this afternoon, Mr. Barrett?
They, they were, yes.
Okay, all right, so this afternoon, you would have received the financial reports, well, treasurer's report and the other one. Which, as you can see in the report, our total cash balance at the end of October was at seventy-eight million five hundred forty-six, excuse me, seventy-eight million five hundred forty-six thousand three dollars, and within that balance includes the general fund balance, which was thirty-eight million three hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and one Any questions on anything through here, of course, October, we would have started with our personal property collections a little bit, so you can see a little bit of those numbers in there, but not, not a significant increase at that point, because bills had only been out about a week, week and a half, somewhere in that, that timeframe, so, if anybody have any questions, because I honestly looked at this at the eleventh hour before coming up here this afternoon, so.
If they might have any questions, Ms. Lynn. All right, next we have our real estate tax duty memo from Ms. Lynn.
Okay, well, there's been fun times down in our neighborhood. Of course, personal property's out, real estate, Commissioner Vault and IT have been working to try to get the Kemba Bridge together from Vision to Munis. We've started in July, been working ever since, actually, Commissioner and IT have been working on it more here recently, trying to get things to process through into Munis as it should, for the commissioner to be able to start picking everything up, to be able to create, create the land book, kind of just go through the process to eventually get the data transferred over to us for billing and collection purposes. Still trying to work out a lot of details, hope that progress would be made, but Ms. Vault just told me that hadn't much changed from yesterday to today, so we, we have high hopes going into every day, but as you know, normally, our due date's December the fifth. We did extend, at your all's approval, the personal property due date to December the thirtieth. I was hoping that we would have both of them on that same due date, but it's really not looking like it's going to be very feasible. At this point, due to the continued extended delay...
At this point, due to the continued extended delay, I'm requesting of you all to consider, one, setting the date, but extending, I guess, in the same token, the due date for 2022 Real Estate Tax to February the 28th of 2023, and that's primarily to allow us more time to try to get everything taken care of to bill out. Our goal right now is to try to get this process complete before we go into the system upgrade, December 7th and 8th. That's two weeks away, I'm not sure how it's going to go, but was in a meeting with Mr. Bear yesterday on some other things with that and some other folks, and we did talk about that, so we're just in a delay on things that we can't control at this point. So, in extending to December, or, excuse me, to February the 28th, at this point in time, if, and this is a big if, bills were to go out by mid-December or shortly thereafter, that would allow about a 75-day timeframe, which would be the same amount of time that we allowed folks for personal property as well. I just don't know where we're going to be. We keep talking in the office and saying June the 30th, but I hope it's not that late, but that's kind of just our inside thing. But February the 28th is the date that I'm asking for consideration, however, if you also choose to set that at a different date, that is entirely your all's choice and vote, so.
What about March 3rd?
March 3rd?
December 30th is on a Friday. February 28th is on a Tuesday, and payday for a lot of people is on Friday.
Right.
So I would think extending it by three more days to March 3rd, so it falls on a Friday, I mean, if that's...
However, I was just looking at kind of an end-of-the-month date was what I was taking into consideration, but again, you all have the final say and vote, so.
Government gets paid on the end of the month, but a lot of people get paid on Friday.
And I will say, we've had a lot of people coming in because they're afraid they've misplaced their bills, and they'll tell us, you know, "I've hunted my house over, I'm pretty sure I've thrown it in the trash," and we're like, "No, no, no, you haven't gotten..." You know, and we're explaining what the situation is. We have a lot of folks coming in that want to go ahead and pay, so we're sending them over to the Commissioner's office with their parcel information. Those folks are calculating those amounts out, and they're coming back to us and going ahead and paying. You know, it's kind of a catch-22. People think they haven't gotten their bill because of the way the mail system's been in recent years. They think they've thrown it away. There's just kind of a lot of things going on, so we need to kind of be able to get something out there that just lets people know that, you know, more so of what the situation is, even though we've already had other things out there, you know, on social media and in the newspaper. But, because a lot of people are thinking, "Well, I didn't get my bill, it's due December 5th, I need to pay it," but we haven't sent it, so it's hard to pay it by December 5th when there's close to 20,000 real estate bills that we haven't even sent yet.
Well, you were talking about the system, what, December 7th?
7th and 8th.
Should we possibly wait till after they flip the switch on that before you set a date?
That's what I was going to ask.
I mean...
My fellow treasures, well, I'll explain this, my fellow treasures that are also on the Munis system, in talking with some of them over the last couple of months, when their localities have upgraded, if they haven't billed out by then, they're all telling me, "You be sure you get your bills out before the upgrade, because it's more of a nightmare to do it after than it is to do it before on your current version." Going off of what they're telling me, that's kind of another reason for our push, because we are not going to be able to have the opportunity to test a bill run through the test system of this upgrade, to make sure all the kinks are worked out, and my fear is if we switch over to the new version, at that point is when we're going to be testing that entire process, and if there's issues, we're still going to be delayed in having to get all of that resolved, versus if we're able to bill out, that gives us the next couple of months to, you know, do test runs through the new version to see how the billing's going to go in the fall.
I would recommend going ahead and doing it, because she, if she can get it done by 7th or 8th, she needs a date to go on it, and you all got to establish that.
And it may get succeeded beyond this.
And I realize what she's...
Yeah.
I wasn't thinking the system upgrade, I was thinking of the system merger of the new...
Right.
I forgot about what you're talking about.
I would, if you want to word it, you know, the contingent of our bills going out in December, you know, setting for March 3rd, and that way if something happens, I mean, you can still come back anyway and change it in the future.
Yeah, as long as we, as long as everyone has the 75-day notice.
Yeah, and we're telling everybody right now, you know, they're not due December 5th. The due date will be extended, it will be at least the end of January, maybe the end of February or later, it is dependent upon when the bills go out, so we're trying to make sure we tell everybody that when they ask. So, a lot of folks are, you know, they're kind of aware, and, you know, they go home and tell their neighbor, and they call, you know, their family member or the friend across town, and, you know, we're getting calls, and people are saying, "Well, I was told," you know, we're telling them at least, at least the end of January, but...
And if we set a date, if we set a date, and then we run into problems, we have the authority, we can wait, delay, and be an interest creator.
Yes, or you can even extend the due date out again.
Or extend the due date.
Yeah.
So, either February 28th or March 3rd, I like your Friday idea.
We have March 3rd on the... All right, have a motion to set the 2022 Real Estate Tax Due Date to March the 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Smith, is there any more questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? It is so set.
Okay.
Anything else, Miss Lynn?
By next board meeting, the Commissioner and I both hope to have some really good news. And nobody will probably be more happier about it than she will be. Thank you.
Ms. Vault, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add to any of that.
Yeah. I figured she covered yours, too, but I wanted to give you...
We look like we've aged a few years. Your glasses are not smudging, Mr. Terry.
I will add it, I did meet with Todd and him at 8:00 last night, they were still here continuing to work on the issue. The good news is, the numbers are right, the numbers that came over, they said, you know, is this the number that we were looking at billing based off the numbers that Ms. Vault gave us last year off of our budget, off what you set the tax rate? I mean, we are, you know, what we had made an estimate on was $14,698,000. The number that's come over from the system is $14,700,000 and something, so I'm like, we're right on, like, so the numbers are there, and the numbers are right, it's just a matter of getting it to credit, so, and that's where they are. So, I appreciate all of their work, IT's work, and all of us will be less gray-headed if we can get these out before the next board meeting.
All right, Sheriff Vault, do you have anything?
No.
All right, move on to new business, we have the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I would ask you all to include approval of consent calendar with the financial report that was emailed to you today as well. Or if not, we can, we include it in next month if you'd like to load the October ending financial report.
All right, so you are supposed to include the financial report on...
If you all want to, or if not, we'll put it in next month.
All right, all entertaining motions to approve the consent calendar and the financial report provided. So move, have a motion by Mr. Horni, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith, is there any...
How did we, where did we get that from? I didn't, I just checked email, I didn't get anything. Just take that off, then we'll put it in the next consent calendar, so it'll be in there.
Okay.
You should have received it by email or Dropbox this afternoon from Ms. McCollum.
I think it was email from Colleen.
Just take that off, that way y'all have an opportunity to review it, that'd be fine.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I'll send you a second. All right, we have a motion, a second, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, is there any question or discussion on that one? All right, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? So approved. Next we have the Main Street Builders Progress Park South Front Station Sewer's Bays Change Order.
This is the closeout change order for the, for that project, is a decrease of $23,847.65. Requesting board approve this change order.
Entertaining motion to approve the change order of a decrease?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Bear, is there any question or discussion on the decrease? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstayed.
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Next we have our abstract of votes.
Mr. Couch indicated he cannot be here, you all can accept if you would like, or if you all want to wait, and I think he indicated he could come at the next meeting, make the presentation you all can, however you'd like to present it.
I don't think the numbers are...
Nothing's going to change?
All right, entertain a motion to approve that abstract of votes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? So approved. Moving on to staff reports, Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do not have a written report for you, but I do have a few quick things to go over. Some of you know, we had an issue with the animal control contact sheet, so we're revising that, we expect, we'll put that in service by January 1st, and give us a little more accountability in how we record and keep track of our contact sheets for animal control officers. You know, that Arlen Dunford retired at the end of October, we do have five applicants to fill that position, we have seven applicants for the shelter attendant position. On the dispatch side, we have lost three this month, so we're getting a little skinny, but the good news is, we have three that are in training that are near the end of their training cycle, so we're ramping back up, trying to get more folks interested in being dispatchers, and we do have a couple of part-timers who are interested in coming on, and a couple of applications that are promising for full-time, so we're not quite in the crunch that we were with dispatch, but still have some training that we'll be doing in the spring. On the purchasing side, we had four responses for our Asia Park Playground updates, staff is starting to review those, they came in last week, we're looking at them, we have a range of prices, you know, we think that we can probably do it with the money that we'll have, and we may ask you to reconsider, or may ask you in December to consider asking with Lynn Foundation to pledge their part again, we'll let you know what we think we need on that, if we need it to make up funding difference, we'll certainly come to you and ask if you want to go that route. Couple of things for, one more thing on purchasing, we've looked at codification for a while, organizing our code of ordinances so that it's a little more user-friendly. We do have a couple of responses to our RFP that we put out for that, and we'll be interviewing those respondees in early December. That's a long-term project, there's not funding in the budget, but once we get a response and we get an idea for the budget, we'll come back to you and ask you for an amendment to the budget if you want to proceed with that project. On the radio project, you're having your staff report from Jamie McCabe, just going over where we are with that. I did have a visit from ProCom today, and they brought some samples of equipment, you know, we've looked, we've had pagers as one of our issues, and I've got a couple of samples, if you want to look at those after the meeting, it's not an action item, but if you're interested, I can show you what we're looking at there. On lead mines, believe it or not, they have a rock boat in their building, it's been delivered, you just signed off on the payment, so we've been over it, and I believe that we have what we were supposed to have, so I think we can move forward with that. They have been out and they've done training, they've had it from Reed Creek to Cribble Creek, and only had one in the water so far, so...
One injury, both of them.
No injuries. The lead mines building, the contractor notified us today that he believes he's gone through everything that he's supposed to do on the punch list, we've not had a chance to go down with you and make sure that everything that was on the punch list has been done. I've been in the building, and I've seen that he has made some improvements that we requested, so, but we'll go through that before we make the final payment, and that'll come before you in December. Back to the radios, we're switching to the UHF, we're still relying on the federal government to give us the licensing that we need for the channels. The radio folks have been in contact with the frequency coordinator, and they do feel confident that we're going to be able to move forward, but they still don't have all the approvals that they need for all the frequencies that we'll be using, but they are moving in that direction, so, you know, we're still working through that side of the process. And then, last time, I believe Mr. Burnett asked about Gant Lane, if not Mr. Burnett, Mr. Smith, we have a meeting scheduled December the 8th at Port Chazal High School, 6:30 PM in the cafeteria, to talk to the folks on Gant Lane, to explain the revenue-sharing road process, and see if they're interested in moving forward. And we do have the petition from four folks on Orion who would like to form the Transportation Service District for Orion Drive, and we'll be bringing that before you once we get everything advertised. I said I was quick, and I lied.
Do they have any questions, Mr. Hankins?
So Mr. Hankins on the lead mines building, let's make sure we got everything took care of before we sign any checks.
Mr. Kinsler and I will be going down with Mr. Taylor, one of the Mr.'s Taylor, and reviewing that pretty carefully.
Do y'all have a date set when you're going to get in there? I'd like to listen.
We'll let you know, but we haven't said anything yet, it won't be this week, but you know, probably about the middle of next week. You want me to go to both? That and...
No, no. Move out on the contract negotiations, the other one.
Okay. You want me to talk about that?
We'll do that.
Okay.
All right, county, Mr. Bear?
A couple of action items for you, first of all, Franklin Street, first floor demolition bid, the first floor, as you know, there was a roof that leaked on that for years, that has completely destroyed the inside, it was moldy, and it has all come out. The Umbarter Contracting, who did a tremendous job on the roof, is a little bitter on the project, and would come in, awarding the contract for the demolition project to Mr. Umbarter, or to Umbarter Contracting.
All right, entertain a motion to award the demo bid to Umbarter Contracting.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni, is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next is the holiday closure request, the, originally, the JPSA had been advised that the Tazza landfill is going to be open on Monday, December 26th, and on Monday, January 2nd. We received notification a couple of weeks ago that they were going to be closed, we contacted the Tazza County Administrator, just asked him to confirm, because I told you if they were closed that date, that our convenience, our transfer station had to be closed that date, if our transfer station was closed that day, we would need to have this being of some of the trash recycling centers closed that day. He had did confirm that they are going to be closed that date, so I would request that you all close our trash and recycling centers to give the employees enough opportunity to be with their families and not get all the rubbish in those two days.
That was 14...
Monday, the 26th and January 2nd. JPSA had said same action closed, there's been some down the table.
I will make that motion. All right, have a motion by Mr. Horni, do I have a second?
Second.
Who is it? Have a second by Mr. Terry, all those in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So approved.
Next is, uh, recommendation from Mr. Bowers on the asphalt bids. Um, two bids were received, one bid did not have necessary requirements, making an unauthorized bid, so only bid was received. Uh, as you can see, greatly exceeded any budgeted amount we have. Um, the asphalt ceiling, uh, did not have, uh, the necessary favorable work to be a legitimate bid on it. Recommend you all reject all bids, and we bid this back out in the spring in hopes for more favorable conditions.
So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second now. Mr. Smith to reject all bids, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. So rejected.
And the last item is just, uh, uh, you all discussed last time, a potential work session to discuss the, the new water, uh, rates, and also, uh, delete from accounts, I just wanted to put that out there and see if you all want to schedule that sometime, um, in the next month.
I would suggest that we wait that for the first year. Do you want to go further?
Sure. All right, uh, I'll put on the agenda.
I mean, unless somebody's up really open these things.
Staff would appreciate that as well. That would be fine. That's all I have for actions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, County Attorney, Mr. Farthing, you have anything?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, Board of Supervisors, time, Mr. Terry?
The, uh, two things real quick. I, I sent an email, but I think it went to the spam folder. I did get one response, but, uh, I would ask the board to maybe consider if we could let them do some resolutions for the, if the Broadheart National Championships at the National, probably coming in South Carolina. If that's something we can do or not, but I would certainly appreciate it if we could, and the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is always a happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and everyone's family, everybody has a happy, blessed Thanksgiving.
All right, Mr. Horni?
Uh, Linda, I think brought up both of the things I wanted to bring up, uh, the signs on Lee Road, and I don't know if we need to write letters to our representatives, state representatives about the state lab, or I think the idea was send it to the secretary, I think the secretary of ag is a good idea. I would like to do that.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, um, I agree with you, Mr., I heard the rumors, like I said, I don't know too much ago, Mr. Bear had reached out and had a special, Mr. Guthrie.
Well, they, they, they held two meetings, and I mean, basically, they were saying that their meetings were just to hear what the public's comment was. Uh, they, they kept saying in the meeting that, you know, nothing's been decided, so there hasn't, hasn't been any decisions made yet. Anything that we can do to persuade them in our direction, I think it was...
I mean, I was, I was personally with hope that it could be that, but Terry didn't, if you ask the county, we're not being afraid to shut any services to the lab that serves us or forms, but...
I would think you would be right, but you never know.
But yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem with, yeah, I've, I have no problem if we could draft a letter and either all of us sign it, or I'll sign it, Steven's signing it, or whatever, we'll send it.
However you want to do it.
Cause I don't know, and, and you may, how, how many counties does that lab serve? Is there another one in Southwest Virginia?
No, there's, there's four in the state of Virginia.
And that's the last one on this end of the state, it's probably, okay.
From here, you go to, I think there's one here, one in Lexington? Or let, not Lexington, Lynchburg, I think. Does it all let pay for Lynchburg? Give it to you, and one in Harrisonburg, and one in, one, one, I think. I mean, if you look at it on the, if you look at it on the map, it's basically eighty-one, and then one over Lynchburg.
Mr. Chairman, would, would you like a motion from Mr. Horni to state that the With County Board of Supervisors, uh, requested a letter be sent, uh, indicating their support for the local lab remaining in Withville, Virginia, to serve With County and surrounding localities, uh, in Southwest Virginia?
Yeah, I think that's what you said, but...
Can we add, can we add to that, that it not be moved to Virginia Tech?
Your motion, sir.
I would make that motion. Well, I mean, that, that was, part, part of the proposal is that they close Withland and move to Virginia Tech, and it's... My biggest problem with moving to Virginia Tech is, are they going to use grad students or something down there to do the testing, and then, how much confidence do you have in this role?
All right, have a motion by Mr. Horni, a second by Mr. Smith, is there any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. So approved. Anything else, Mr. Horni?
I believe that's it.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, so we met with, uh, uh, Mr. Bauer myself, and, uh, Dr. Cole met with Vida, um, a couple of Thursdays back, I guess it was. Um, had some pretty good conversation about the crosswalk, uh, we were actually waiting to see if we were awarded, um...
Half funding.
Without funding, uh, this time we'll see, should be next week, I guess, is the way they're talking about, a couple of weeks. Um, the speed limit's on fifty-two, not so much. Got a little stressed out over that, but, uh, they're going to reevaluate the ninety-four speed limits from this, uh, red light back toward, uh, St. Paul Church, so that, that was a plus, uh, but the speed limit's on fifty-two, I don't think they're going to do anything there. Uh, the only, I got two other things, uh, a sign for the Sheriff's Department. I know we have a lot of people that looks for the Sheriff's Department, and they got one on the side of the building. Is there any way that we can get one out of where you can see it coming up and down that street? You don't have to actually look at the side of the building. Okay, what to do, and I'd appreciate that. Yes, look at some. And then, uh, the la- the last thing I got is, uh, I did have some residents, but since they've mowed, there's a lot of trash been exposed, uh, especially around the fifty-two, uh, north and south, in, uh, major ground areas. So people were asking about that, if we could get the inmates in, and I explained that it's not as easy to get the inmates out like it was.
Stand by, that's all.
Okay, if you can help out, that'd be great.
No, I'm afraid I can't.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lawson?
Um, the only thing I have is Mr. Bear, Mr. Hankins, and I guess Mr. Farthing for part of it. If you all would just give me an update on the boat ramp situation. And as far as, uh, Mr. Farthing, I figure you've been there too because of the fencing issue we discussed a little bit. I'm not sure if we ever really got it out from, it's nothing urgent, I mean, it's not a...
We have an updated agreement that just came in, I think, last week, it had to be signed by December twenty-ninth, if I remember correctly, so it has been reviewed, all right.
No big deal, I just, you know, hope, you know, long shot that maybe by the end of next summer, we could have something.
We're also waiting on, uh, approval from AEP for the use of
Okay.
that lease, uh, for that sa- that, that lower ramp.
Okay, I know you all are on top of it, I just haven't had an update a little bit, so, thank you.
Ms. Delp is, uh, is doing most of the legwork on that.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Barrett? I have just a few things, uh, and I see it in the Dropbox here, the Shadow Lane water pressure problem. We can make sure that, and that discussion comes up, Water Committee, uh, we can try to get that addressed, whatever phone, phone it is, that they were talking about, um, and I still got some more citizens talking about both on the road, and what might be available for, uh, state maintaining that, um, and then go along with the sign, we're going to have trash recycling signs, it's maybe says large letters, it becomes residence only, or, um, I, I better talk to Mr. Bear about it, but, um, everybody knows. I mean, getting lots of phone calls, I don't know.
All right, that's served, Mr. Cook?
The only thing I have is Mr. Bear could update us on, I started a park, and soon he's running down the road.
Yes, uh, I, I did a follow-up, uh, with, uh, the Health Department, um, they indicated that they have not, uh, still have not received, or Mr. Keen has not come by and picked up any of the information, uh, that they have offered him. Um, the representative from the Health Department, uh, is on vacation this weekend, could not attend our meeting. Um, during a, another meeting today that I had, uh, with DEQ, I asked them about their septic, uh, project funding that they have. Uh, explained the situation, uh, with this trailer park, and, uh, they just generally, in, in first glance, think it would, would, would be a potential project for their funding. Uh, most of those projects have been running through PVCs, uh, in their projects, so I have, uh, copied that to two representatives from the Health Department and, uh, Mount Rogers PDC, um, and asked them if, if what I, steps I can take, or if they can initiate a meeting to review this, to see if this may be a, a funding source that may be able to assist with that project. So, um, as Mr. Holliday had indicated before, they've got the legal steps to go through in the process of, of what they take, but, uh, this is going to be a very challenging one for them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have nothing else. Thank you, sir. Um, I've got one big thing, um, the regional jail going back to what Mr. Smith, um, was talking about this year. The inmates pick up trash, um, you know, we would love to have the, the trash crew back, um, we understand that was an extra service that the regional jail provided us for a couple of years, but one of the basic services that regional jail has provided since its inception was providing transport. Um, now, it started off almost every weekend, they didn't have a transport company. So anybody that was arrested by the Sheriff's Office, by DDE, they had to drive them, uh, that's two hours. Um, Grayson County, you know, you'd have another fifty minutes each way in the town. That's unacceptable. Um, I wasn't at the last jail meeting, Mr. Hankins was there, and he's indicated superintendent, acting like it had happened a couple of times. And, uh, it's every weekend, and now it's happening every week, and that's not acceptable. For two million dollars a year, no. And I emailed the superintendent and was just, and, and asked her, you know, can you give me a, you know, some numbers of, of how Mrs. Hapman? And she was not replied, she, well, she did reply, said she'd like to really discuss it, um, on the phone call, and I was like, no, I want something off. Um, but was that not part of the original agreement that they did provide transportation services?
That predates me, but that would have been my assumption.
There's not, there's not touching with Kenny's predation.
Thank you. Um, if, if you would have asked me if that's a standard service of the jail in the process, I would have responded, yes, it always has been, and I would, uh, have thought that that was part of the setup, was that when you went to the regional jail, the transport was part of. I can dig back through the files here and have staff see if we can, you know, pull up some of the information documents and see what's there. My, my understanding would be that it is, um, it's part of the services we want to do.
Well, we, you know, and, you know, the Sheriff's Office shorthand, the DDE's shorthand, the Grayson County Sheriff's Office shorthand, Carroll County, ev- all, everybody's shorthand, and this is, you know, I had my issues with, with Mount Rogers last year, and, you know, this is just an extension of that, and I don't, you know, we send a lot of money, but, and now we're spending gas and man-hours, and Sheriff's, I don't know if you want to add anything.
Yeah. What you're saying is exactly right. The mission down, the luck, the drop, more to do with coordination, and the government side, they can transport the government, that's one thing, like I said.
And, and, you know, they, they increased the per diem, you know, because of the decline in, in population and their operational cost, and, and I understand, you know, their argument with, with that decision, but when they start cutting what I consider basic services, I have a problem with that. So, good luck with getting the trust. And, um, besides that, I hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving, Miss Johnson, thanks for coming and visiting. Come back in a couple of years and tell us how you like it.
All right, next item on the agenda is we have a closed session under two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-one, discussion of personnel matters, building the ground apartment head, section two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-three, acquisition of dis- of disposition of real property in Progress Park, and two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-twenty-nine, contract negotiations, A and E.
And would you add A eight, confrontation with legal counsel, Paul?
And confrontation with legal counsel, Paul, under two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight?
Yes, sir.
All right, entertain a motion, have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Cook, all those in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, we're now in a closed session. Have a motion to come out of closed session by Mr. Smith, I have a second. Have a second by Mr. Cook, all those in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, we're now back in open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification, please.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, and such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies it to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I will make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion on the certification? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, does anybody have anything to come before the board?
I make a motion that we authorize staff to enter into negotiation with CJL.
Oh, second to motion. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, a second by Mr. Burnett.
Mr. Chairman, would you add a negotiate and execute an agreement?
Yes. Negotiate and execute.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Anything else to come before the board?
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Anybody else? We'll be adjourned.